Welcome everyone to May 25th, 2021, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Marty Aitkins, the chairman. If the clerk could take a roll call, please.
Mike Covaes?
Here.
Charlie O'Brien?
Present.
Russell Chin?
Here.
Brian Riddell?
He's here.
Martin Aitkins?
Here.
John Himmel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jeff Franco?
Here.
Thank you.
Under, uh, tonight, could we have a motion, please, to waive the reading of the minutes of, uh, May 13th, please, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of our meeting that was held on May 13th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. And a new business, case number ZBA 2084. If whistle for variance to renovate and expand the single-family home and construct a loft area with a kitchenette, a bath, a detached garage on the premises number 11 Bayberry Road, is the applicant or representative here?
The representative is here, yes.
And do we have a new set of plans that we asked for?
Uh, yes, we do, and we're prepared to show that this evening.
Yeah, but we didn't get, but we have to have them a week ahead of time, so we're gonna move the date. What's good for you?
When's the next hearing?
How many do we have on June 8th?
A lot.
A lot? What's June, the next one is June?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yeah. Twenty-second.
June 22nd? Yeah, could you upload those to the portal, please? And then we can just print them out for everybody and mail them out, uh, as long as we get them, so we can get them mailed out for the meeting. The next available meeting we have is June 22nd. Uh, Michael, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, matter number 20-84, if whistle for a variance to renovate and expand the single-family home and construct a loft area with kitchenette and bath, detached garage on the premises number 11 Bayberry Road, I make a motion to continue the hearing to June 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Brian on that one?
Uh, yeah, uh, right now, uh, Mr. Aitkins, myself, and, uh, Mr. Franco is out, and I'd like to turn the meeting over to Michael Covaes, Chair, ZBA 2077, 48.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's property number 20-77, Nicholas James Stragas, for a special permit finding to use the space as a specialty auto repair shop on the premises number 42-48 Federal Ave. If there's an advocate or a representative here?
Yes, I'm here.
There you are, Nick, how are you?
I'm doing all right, how are you?
Good. Last time you were here, we, uh, we said, we were very concerned about the parking situation, and I was, I asked you to, uh, talk to, uh, Mr. Duca, I believe, and see if you could come up with something, so, uh, were you successful in coming up with something?
Yes, I believe so. Uh, Mr. Duca has actually, um, visited the property, um. What he recommended was to limit, uh, a number of customers to no more than three at any given time. Um, I've also, in addition, secured, um, parking, overflow parking if there were a crazy scenario where we couldn't house. We, we can house roughly nine cars in here, there's, I don't ever foresee a need whatsoever, but we did secure additional parking spaces for rent, um, from two separate neighbors. One document has been uploaded, um, to that effect.
Okay.
Madam?
But again, we didn't see this before.
I submitted it, um, several days ago, um, I uploaded it.
Michael LaCorte has one here for you.
I beg your pardon?
And it's a parking agreement up to five spaces, um, beginning May 1st at a hundred dollars when used. Hundred dollars, so.
Hundred dollars a day?
Right, the five spaces.
Is that a hundred dollars a day, Nick?
Um, I'd be willing to pay a hundred dollars a day at this point.
But that sounds kinda hefty for Quincy.
Well, I mean, not being able to operate is even heftier. Um, we've also gone and introduced ourselves to the neighbors on the street where parking may be affected, introduced ourselves and, um, got letters of endorsement from, uh, no less than 12, which I also uploaded.
Where's the volume?
Sorry.
Yeah, right there.
Uh, since we already had the public hearing of this, did we, guys?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, why don't you, uh, no, let me ask the board if they have any questions. So, uh, Mr. Chip, you have any questions?
I do not, uh, have questions at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Riddell?
I don't have any questions, I, I do just have a comment, like, I, I did drive by the location no more than 2,000 times over the last few weeks, um, at all hours of the day, and I just don't see the traffic issues that were mentioned. I don't see parking issues, I didn't see any parking on street, uh, during the day that was from, anywhere from 7:00 AM until, until, uh, after 5:00 even some days, um, I just didn't see the issues that, that were discussed and presented to us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Himmel?
Yeah, Nick, where, where is it, what's the address of the, uh, where you rented space for additional work?
It's our literal next-door neighbor, and then there's one down the street on Federal Ave across from where my, uh, I think it's 43? I'll second, I can get you the exact address. The other one, I haven't secured the actual paperwork for yet, uh, we haven't, we've been playing a game of, uh, missing one another, but I can give you his address as well.
Funny one, Goddard Street?
That's the next-door neighbor, and then, um, Peter DeBona on 43 Federal, I believe, he, he had, uh, he was okay with that as well. So I just haven't secured the, the signature yet, but, um, he's, I left it with our landlord to, to connect with him because he keeps different hours than I do.
Is that the, uh, DeBona landscaping?
Correct.
Alright.
Charlie, it's, uh, Brian, anything to say?
Uh, like, like Brian, since the last hearing, I think I've been by there three or four times, um, not, not specifically to go there, but on my way by. Uh, I didn't notice anything, um, the commercial stuff seemed to be more of a distraction than the, you know, than that stuff in the residential area. So, uh, that's just my observations.
Um, okay. So do we have any correspondence there from anybody, anything new? Norine, I'm asking you, I guess.
Yes, I have a petition submitted by the applicant in favor. Um, he also uploaded it on the portal.
Okay.
There's, um, several neighbors that wrote in support, and I have some opposition.
Okay, uh, how much opposition do you have?
Uh, two letters in opposition.
Uh, that was one, what did you say?
Two letters in opposition.
Okay, okay.
Eight, wait a minute, nine, 10, 11, 12 people in favor.
Okay. Is there anybody in the, uh, audience here who wanna speak at all? Again, I'm just sorta, you know, I know we had the public hearing, but this is more new information. No?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one additional question, which would go to, uh, probably Commissioner Duca there, and, uh, what, um, do we have the ability to approve it with, like, a certain max number of vehicles on site? I know I kinda asked that the last meeting.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Riddell, Jay Duca, Director of Inspection Services, for the record. Um, as you, as the board asked me, I met with the applicant early on, and I made him understand the concerns of the board. Uh, during that conversation, he suggested he lower the amount to three. I told him, you know, to run that by the board, um, the answer to your question, Brian, is yes, you can condition this in any which way that you want, and bear in mind as well, he also needs to go to license board, who can also, um, condition it, which can be adjusted along the way if it finds that, uh, he's operating not in the public good. Um, so, um, I told, I basically told him, he didn't do a really good job presenting the case early on with the number of vehicles, so forth and so on, and that he should really make an effort to reach out to the neighbors, which I think he did. Secondly, uh, I got complaints that he was operating, this is after our meeting of the last time, that there were tow trucks, many cars. So I went down with, uh, Quincy Police Officer, Mac Folen, we visited the site. It was empty, there was nothing going on, and the applicant happened to show up. He let us in, he was very cooperative, there's nothing going on, and I, I just wanted to, to, uh, reiterate too, that I, I found nothing going on there in the last, uh, several weeks. So I just wanted to relay that to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Jay. Um, well then, I think, uh, well, I do see it's a hand up. And, look, uh, let him, let him talk, go ahead.
John Rotelfeld?
Hold true, that's what the truth to help you, God.
I do, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I got one question for you, though, did you comment about this last time?
Did I comment?
Yes, last time.
Rob, I don't know, maybe, you know, I, I can't remember.
Okay, okay, you got, you got like 30 seconds, go ahead.
Oh, no, well, I mean, you had that list, I mean, there, there were two people that, you know, were, were in opposition. I was at a public meeting, um, last night, Council of Palmucci was, was doing, and one of the, um, questions was, um, would you wanna live next door, that, I'm just concerned for the citizens that, that live in that area for like listening to, you know, like the noise of the guns that take tires off, it's, you know, they, they open up early, and to say like, you know, control the customers, you know, it's, it's hard to control how many people go to your restaurant, or how many people come to your business, you're really, you can control your workers, you can control your workplace environment, but you can't control your customers, and, um, you know, they're real, my other concern was that I'm not sure if there's actually people living.
Come on, it's not us.
So, um, you know, it's just a matter of, um, I'm on the side of those two people that, um, against it, so if there's 12 people on that petition, and there's two people that are against it.
Mr. Rotelfeld, you are, you are fading away, I could barely hear you.
Yeah.
May I address those concerns?
Hang on. Uh, John, you done?
His lips are still moving.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Nick.
I know, I mean, uh, we're, once again, we're happy to operate within certain parameters, we don't have it set for early hours. It is only one master mechanic, this is his shop, this was me paying a debt forward to him, um, so he has an opportunity to operate within whatever timeframe, uh, needed. If you note, though, that the people who signed the petition in favor of, almost all of them are the ones that are directly on the street facing the garage.
Well, you can work with three customers at a time?
Yes, um, we'll operate in whatever parameters.
Alright, well, uh.
Eight to six or something? Mike, minimum hours, eight, eight to six or something?
Do that. What does that sound like to you there?
No Sundays?
No Sundays.
Uh, no Sundays in general.
I mean, they'll, they'll have to do that in, in licensing, I think anyways, but, I mean, we can, we can stipulate it, too.
Absolutely.
So Charlie, could you give me a motion? That says, that says that three customers only, uh, eight, hours of eight to six, and no Sunday at all?
Mr. Chairman, may I, now, Mike, may I interject that, um, in the application, his hours proposed are eight to five, so I'm not sure we wanna extend the hours for him.
No, no, let's make it eight, eight to five, but thank you, uh, Mr. Chip. Thank you.
So we're gonna, we're gonna limit the, uh, storage and, and work area to three vehicles, is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, that's what we're doing, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, got it right, Brian?
It's fine, but, yeah.
Okay, ready here, we wanna motion?
Yep, yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion regarding case number Z, uh, 20-77, Nicholas James Stragas, for a special permit of finding to use the space as a specialty auto repair shop on the premises numbered 42 to 48 Federal Avenue, Quincy. I, um, make a motion to grant the requested, um, finding, and the, um, conditions are that it's hours of operation are limited eight to 5:00 PM, and it'll be limited to three vehicles, um, at a time.
And, uh, they'll also maintain a rental agreement for additional spaces.
Maintain the agreement with the additional spaces that he's, he's secured.
Yeah. Alright, uh.
Could I interrupt you one second, you do have someone on a phone who does have their hand up, I don't know if you're opening to comments or?
I, I'm not really.
The motion's on the floor, too late.
Yeah, kinda late now, uh, sorry, um, okay, let's have a vote. Uh, can we have a, a, uh, roll call vote, please, Norine?
Second on the motion.
Go to new business. Second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Norine, can you give us a, uh, a roll call vote, please?
I sure can, Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Brian Riddell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Michael Covaes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Covaes.
Welcome to the stage.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Under new business, we could turn to ZBA 2127. Peyton? The applicant here?
Left him up.
Alright, he might not be online, here's what happened, they made, the printing of the advertisement came out wrong, so we have to re-advertise it, so we're gonna move him to June 8th. Number 27, grab a motion, please, Mr. Covaes.
Matter number 21-27, Jeffrey Peyton, for a variance to expand an existing deck to 10 feet of the premises number 36 Town Hill Street, and make a motion to continue the hearing to June's, June 8th, I'm sorry, June 8th.
Second.
Under motion, stand on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Case number ZBA 2129. Same thing happened to that, these two made a mistake in the advertisements, so we have to re-advertise it to June 8th, please.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-29, Deborah Collins, Collins, for a variance to install a wall mount sign on premises number 122 Granite Street, I make a motion to extend the hearing to, uh, June 8th.
Second.
Under motion, stand on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Back to, back to new business, ZBA 2132, Coleman Barry, for variance to construct a covered deck on the premises number 25 Hillsborough Street. Is the applicant or representative here?
You do, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I got it, there it is. Yeah, okay. Yep.
I am, this is Col Barry here.
Okay. I brought it.
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much, uh, for, for giving me an opportunity today. I was going to share my screen, oh, I'm sorry, Col Barry, 25 Hillsborough Street, which is also the property subject to the application. I thought if okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I will share my screen to help with the presentation.
Yep, John, can you do that for us, please?
He's all set, he should have the access.
Yep.
Okay, you have the access now.
Just to ground, uh, everyone in what we're talking about today, uh, this is a, not a picture of my home, but it was the best, uh, simile I could find on the internet, um, I have a classic Cape house, and I'm gonna be building a rectangular, uh, what I refer to as a farmer's porch on the front of the house. And my house looks pretty much exactly like this, a couple dormers, and it's gonna be a rectangular structure in the front of the house. I thought it would be helpful to show the current, um, look of the house. In the application, I submitted, uh, a couple of different plans, a, uh, plan, which is on the screen right now, showing the property as it existed for the past 70 years, which is, uh, this rectangular structure with a small vestibule on the front, that vestibule will be removed, it's a four-foot deep by approximately five or six-foot wide vestibule. And I'm scrolling to a scale, uh, representation of what I proposed to build. Again, you, you see the vestibule here in the middle, that will be demolished. Right now, the front of my house minus the vestibule is 26.5 feet from the front property line. The deck I proposed to build is eight feet deep, 32 feet long, which would bring me to 18.5 feet from the front property line. Uh, something that I, I spent a lot of time doing was making sure that my addition was in conformance with my neighborhood. Those of you who are familiar with Hillsborough Street or the surrounding neighborhood would perhaps know that many structures are closer than the 25-foot, uh, setback. In fact, the three houses that I look at directly across the street, they are all closer than my finished project will be. Uh, they range from 15 to just under 18 feet from the street, where after my project is done, my porch will be 18 and a half feet. Uh, so hopefully, uh, no deviation from the general character and, uh, flavor of the neighborhood. And then, finally, something I was, I was very keen to do, I made sure the counselor, Andrónico, was in favor of this project, he was. I hand-delivered a letter to every one of my neighbors on Hillsborough Street, asking if they had any questions or concerns about the project. Not only did I not receive any negative feedback, um, many neighbors stopped by to tell me how they couldn't wait for the project to be finished, because it was going to enhance the character of the neighborhood. So that, in a nutshell, was what I, I wanted to put forward in my initial presentation, but very happy to answer any questions, uh, from the board.
Barry, are you, uh, are you a counselor, a lawyer?
Um, my day job is I'm a lawyer, uh, um, counselor, lawyer, we're using those together, yes, but, uh.
I just wanna make sure that, that we didn't give you a note instead, if you needed it before you opened up your projects. So you don't need one. You work, you work as a counselor? You're a lawyer? Yes?
I am a lawyer, I'm sorry, I wasn't following you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I'm a lawyer.
Okay, is there any, I don't have any questions, I think it'll make your house a lot better, and it's gonna look beautiful myself, but that's just me. Mr. Covaes?
I have no questions.
Questions?
Nope.
So Brian?
Yeah, I, I just have one, um, on the, on, one of the pieces that he just put up, he showed, um, the line that he was measuring from the front of the proposed porch, and there was a note that said the back of the sidewalk, is that the property line? Or is that the back of the sidewalk? Cause it makes a difference, I mean, if he's, he's supposed to be off the property line, not the sidewalk.
I hear what you're saying.
It's 18.5 feet to the sidewalk.
But where's the property line, is my, my question?
Yeah, I didn't believe that I owned the sidewalk.
It's at the sidewalk.
Say it again?
At the sidewalk?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Barry, go.
I was, I was just saying that it was never my understanding that I owned the sidewalk in front of my house. I've always believed, and the plans make it look like my property line goes along the sidewalk, and so I can confirm that, having that as the assumption, it is 18 and a half feet from the front of my proposed porch to the beginning of the city sidewalk.
Okay, cause what, the, the drawing that you put up that showed the proposed porch, I, I was confused by that when I looked at, uh, the, the inspection thing, too.
Yeah, if you look at the, uh.
There's a line there, there's a broken line.
Sidewalk.
The broken line is, my property is two different lots, uh, I don't know why. I have a skinny, narrow piece of property that runs along the front, and then the rest of my property is behind, so where you see that dotted line, that's just in the middle of the graph.
Okay.
And then the hard line is where the sidewalk is.
Alright, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, Mr. Mr. Chin?
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Thank you. Uh, any correspondence about, is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor, second call?
Hugh Rotelfeld has his hand.
John Rotelfeld, you're up. Opposed, please? John?
I'm in favor of this project, thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else wants to speak in favor? Last call? All the party hearing calls, I have a letter here from the DPW, May 11th, 2021, 25 Hillsborough Street, case number ZBA 2132. We reviewed the middle for the above-referenced project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Who?
Mark Crosby, have this handle?
Mark, do you have your hand up? Mark Crosby?
I'm not seeing any virtual hands, if somebody's looking for.
Oh, alright, nevermind, that's a cursor here somewhere.
If someone's looking for virtual hands, it would be in the participants.
Oh, I got it, I just moved it, it was on this. Second call? Third call, call it close. I'm in favor, Mr. Covaes?
Uh, I'm in favor also.
So Brian?
Um, are you worried about them enclosing it later, Mike?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Himmel?
I'm in favor as well.
Grab, grab a motion, please, Mr. Covaes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in matter number 21-32, Coleman Barry, for a variance to construct a covered deck on the premises number 25 Hillsborough Street, make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
We have a roll call vote, please, Madam Chair?
Mike Covaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Aitkins?
Yes. Uh, further under tonight's new business, ZBA 2082. Oh, yeah, Mr. Barry, you're all set.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night, thank you again.
You too. Further under tonight's business, ZBA 2082. Robert Peniman, for variance to remove the existing masonry stairs and replace it with seven-by-16 deck with stairs on premise 11 Vertile. The applicant, the representative here?
If the applicant is here, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Is there anyone here? 11 Vertile Street? Second call?
Even from some.
Alright, we'll, we'll just hold that, maybe they're having trouble signing on, we'll hold that off. Let's go on to the next one, bring them back. ZBA 2015, Virtual Capital Group LLC, for a special permit floodplain variance to remove the existing single-family house, construct a new side-by-side duplex style on premise number 651 C Street. The applicant or representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Edward Fleming, on behalf of the applicant, uh, Virtual Capital Group. If I may also share my screen?
Here, John?
You're all set.
All set.
Thank you. Um, uh, the applicant, I'm, I'm joined tonight by, uh, Dmitri Shangin, um, who was the principal of Virtual Capital Group. As you indicated, Mr. Chairman, the, the property that's involved with this application is 651 C Street. The, it's zoned, it's located in a Residence B zoning district, uh, and we are seeking, as you said, a special permit floodplain as well as variances tonight. Um, the property at 651 C Street is a 5,000-square-foot parcel of land. It consists presently, as you can see by the assessor's map in front of you, um, by a home, a single-family home that's constructed um, by a home, a single family home that's constructed on the very far left side of the site. In fact, um, we believe that the site, that the property may even encroach over the property line on that side. So it's very close to the single family home on on the corner of uh Kilby Street and and C Street. Um, on the opposite side of that building, it abuts a large apartment complex. Um, so it's a very kind of a mixed neighborhood of both single and multifamily properties. Uh, the applicant is seeking to remove the existing single family home, which is somewhat dilapidated in condition, um, and has been vacant for some time, and construct a new side by side duplex style building on the site. Um, uh, the applicant has prepared a couple a couple of renderings of the proposal shown here uh as our one and a secondary rendering uh showing the building uh as constructed on the site. Um, the the property will consist of three store will be three stories in height. It will be serviced by a garage on the first floor level as well as storage area within that first floor. On the first floor, it will consist of standard living area, um, living room, dining room, kitchen, bathroom and small office. And on the top floor, it will consist of three bedrooms. Um, the third level will also have access to the roof, as you can see on the top, uh, with access to a small roof deck, uh, individual roof deck for each um owner. It's intended that this property will be um services in condominium and each of these units will be sold separately privately by the um by the condominium owners. Um, with appropriate regulations in place to comply with all the um all the decisions of this board and also the Conservation Commission. Uh, we spoke, um, uh, Mr. Segman and I spoke in detail about the busyness of C Street and the the difficulty in pulling backing on to C Street, essentially taking your life in your hands by doing so. So when uh so in designing the this proposal, um, the applicant took into account and widen the driveway so that it allows for vehicles to back out of the driveway uh by back out of the garage and then turn uh before exiting onto C Street. And as as a as a result of that, uh, we've um we're requesting a paving ordinance to allow us to pave uh the a larger portion of the front yard so that on each side of the garage, there's a turnaround area so that vehicles can back out, turn around in that turnaround area and then enter onto uh C Street. But there will, however, be an island, as you can see, a landscape island in the front of the property that will hide that driveway, a majority of that driveway from visibility. Um, and provide a little green space in the front of the property. Um, we we think it's a really necessary uh aspect of the proposal to have that large turnaround area so that you can enter onto C Street in a in a safer manner. Um, there'll be paved walkways uh to each uh side of the building that will provide access to each each unit, a separate access to each unit as well. Um. The existing nonconforming nature of the property obviously provides its own hardships and difficulties. And um and this is also located within a floodplain uh district. Uh, we had appeared before the Conservation Commission prior to this hearing, at which time the uh the arch this engineers and the scientists involved in this proposal presented the plans to the Conservation Commission. Then it was very well received by the Conservation Commission and the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions for this proposal before appearing here before you tonight. Um, this is a a very similar to proposal than than others that have been uh proposed on C Street throughout the area. Uh, we think that this fits in to the community. It certainly fits into the Residence B zoning district uh provisions and requirements. And as I indicated, this is a somewhat of a mixed area. Um, and this is a a a a mixed use as well, um, in being that it's a it provides for essentially two units next to a single family, but in between that and a in a multifamily building. Uh, we think it's a great proposal. We reached out to Counselor McCarthy. We shared the proposal with Counselor McCarthy. He asked that we reach out to the neighbor, the budding neighbor, single family homeowner next door, which the applicant did. Uh, he presented the plans to the neighbor and the neighbor did not express any concerns about the proposal at that time. In fact, although the building is certainly taller than what's what's existing today, it's uh the building has been pulled away and back away from the uh lot line uh so that it will no longer encroach on the property line and will provide a little bit of a buffer area, uh certainly um distance between that and the next home. Um, so we did. It was um it was well received by the counselor and the neighbor and we're hopeful that the board will also consider that as well. So that's the applicant's presentation. Um, we have, in addition to the plans that I showed you here, I'll just scroll through um kind of the floor plan setup, um, indicating, as you can see, um, each unit is located side by side. Um, and uh it it provides, um, you know, gross uh floor plans on each and every floor, although you have those plans before you as well today. Um, but that's the applicant's presentation tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. But I wish I had a set of plans that I didn't need contacts and appear magnified. Quite brutal. Anyway, I went and got them and I read it. And why do we have a fourth floor up there? Uh, which I'm not in favor of all. Uh, I think it's way too big. Let me finish. I think it's way too big. I think you're five feet from the lot line on each side. You have four bedrooms in there. You've labeled one as an office. That's fine. That's a fourth bedroom. You're gonna have eight bedrooms in there with four parking spaces. Then people come over there, they're gonna block you in to visit. And then you're gonna be shuffling paths. Or people have four bedrooms and have kids of age, then then you're in trouble there. There's no place to park anywhere on that street. There's no place on Kirby. You can't park in Kirby Street, Hillby Street. So to me, to me, just me, fourth floor gotta go. You wanna walk up for a walk up, put a walk up set of stairs and a hatch. A flat roof's fine. I just think it's my opinion for that lot. For the single family house on the other side, I think it's asking a lot. I I'm just not in favor of the way it's built and laid out. That's just me. Uh, let me see if there's any questions for Mr. Cabeas.
I don't have any questions, but I just have a comment. I I it is four. It's four stories. I don't know. That's all I have.
Yep, uh. So Brian?
Uh, no questions or comments at this time.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I have a few questions uh for the applicant. Um, first of all, what are you proposing for landscaping and buffer between the uh the neighbors and this building?
Well, the 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 landscaping, there's not a a ton of room for landscaping on that on the walkway side. That what 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 the applicant is providing is um is the walkway to access the the um each home. Uh, but he is providing with, uh, as you can see, landscaping in the front uh as well as the uh the the trees that are shown on the plan, both in the front and the rear of the site. Um, we can certainly, I think, uh, there was somewhat decorative landscaping along each building, as you can see on the on the on the drawing to provide green space look as it shadows the building. Uh, but there's um, there's no landscaping specifically provided there on the side.
Yeah, my concern my concern there is if you're getting additional pavers for the front, then you're you have there's no grass in the back, really, except for a small patch that I see on your plan. So you're 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 covered the entire lot almost with with solid material and no drainage and so flood zone.
The the um the the uh the the rear of the site has actually set back um, set back significantly. Um, let's see. So there's a green, there's green space within the rear of the site. Um, I'm looking at the setback here.
Eighteen three.
Right. So there's there's a there's quite a bit of green space in the rear of the site. And uh and as I said, Mr. Chin, the um the um, the Conservation Commission reviewed this very closely um and reviewed comments from the DPW uh department um and was satisfied and and comfortable that the um that the green space provided in the rear of the site was gonna provide adequate drainage for the for the proposal. Uh, and certainly with the addition of the some some small landscaping within the front, the landscaping island that provided that additional green space.
My last comment, my last common concern is the uh the front parking area and the number of bedrooms that you have. And if you have that many bedrooms, you're gonna have several cars parked in the front, which could cause a blockage on C Street when cars trying to get ingress into your building can't get in because there are too many cars parked there. And so theoretically, I understand your your idea to create more parking spaces there for safer egress and ingress. However, it could backfire and too many cars could park there and cause cars not to be able to to access the building. I don't expect you to ever comment to that, but that's just a thought.
No, I was gonna say, the only the only thing that I could, only way I could respond is is that it was it was it was designed sufficiently wide to provide area that vehicles could park as shown there. The the blue car, for example, that's shown on that plan is actually even outside that turning area, the turning radius area, so that it allows that additional visitor space. Um, and certainly if 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 guests, if people within the building have guests, um, visit them, then there would be addition, then there would be parking available as that other vehicle is parked. Um, that wouldn't interfere with the ability for for this secondary home to to turn around and exit their home. Um, so it allows for those two additional spaces out out front. Uh, but I hear your comments and and if I could just respond to the comments about the fourth level. That fourth level is is really limited to the access stairway that goes up with a small storage area. There's no living area in that top level. In fact, when we initially proposed this, I I believed it to be a uh a through still a three story building. Um, but because of the but but uh Mr. Anderson required that we uh request that fourth story um height relief. Uh, but it's really limited to um a a storage area and an access stairway. Now, uh, we could certainly look at that and and reduce that further, but there has to be some protrusion onto the roof area in order to utilize the roof um of the building. So there'll have to be a tower.
Counselor, around the corner, there's one and it's flat roof. I don't think they have anything coming out of it. They just have the guardrails on the top. Like a hatch, you come up to to you climb up and you when you flip the hatch, you come out of the roof. But there is no building up top. Just take a look at it because I when I saw it, that's what we talked about before. There'll be no fourth story up there. That's just that's just makes sense in what's down. Uh. Who am I missing? Mr. Ray Dell? No, Mr. uh Timmel.
I mean, that's two hundred and nineteen square feet, each one of those square blocks on the fourth floor. That that that's that's a lot of space. That's a lot of storage space. I mean, having said that, it it's a nice design, but it's 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 a bad design for this lot. I think it's too much.
Thank you, Mr. Himmel. Uh. Now, Paulson, you want me to finish the hearing or you wanna go back and do something?
Well, we'd certainly, yeah, we would certainly ask the ability to um to to look at the
comments that the board has raised and and look at potential revisions to the plans. I certainly don't have an an easy way to communicate with my client here tonight because of the Zoom um meeting. So we certainly request, and I don't know if there are people here um that want to be heard, if you want to take any public comments, so we can incorporate any kind of any kind of comments into the.
All right, let's go through it then and then we'll talk after this. All right.
Marty, Counselor, Counselor McCarthy had his hand up just a few seconds ago.
Yeah, right. I was just, Counselor, I don't know if you want to hear from the neighbors first, if they hear or you want to speak first.
No, sure. Let's let's hear from everybody and and then I don't wanna, I want to throw my two cents in. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. Is there anyone here like to speak in favor? In favor? James Bailey? Mr. Cabeas, could you please swear him in? Mr. Bailey, hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Mr. Bay.
So I'm actually, I'm the architect on the project, so I'm here in in the meeting as well. And um, I just wanted to speak to that fourth story, uh, like the to access the roof decks. We actually tried to mimic the design of the property directly behind six fifty one. It's pretty much the same design. It's three stories. And then there's like a small headhouse on the top to access.
Yeah, but he's got ten thousand square feet over there too, I think.
Okay, well, I'm just I'm just trying to rationalize why, what the point was with that. Um, and also in terms of the the open, the green space, we don't need any zoning really for that. There is a pretty large backyard, so in terms of, you know, drainage, um, that shouldn't be an issue. We abide by that kind of zoning dimensional regulation. Um, but that's all. I just wanted to let you know that I am here and I'm I'm open to answer any questions about the design as well, if anybody on the board has questions.
Well, I think there's people here that the fourth floor I think is out. I just think that's out. I don't think.
Okay, we did. We are open to reducing it to or, you know, if it has to be out, then then so be it.
Well, but what you have, you have three bedrooms on a third floor and you have another bedroom downstairs you marked as an office. Mark it what you want. It could be a bedroom and someone would use it as a bedroom. Use that as your storage and get rid of that thing.
I mean, that that may be, we we purposely didn't put a closet in there just with the, you know, for the off the option to have a home office. Um, I understand that anyone, you can put a bed in there and it can be a bedroom, but we purposely we didn't want it to have four bedroom units. We want it to strictly be three with an office. But I understand that it could be a bedroom.
All right, uh.
You have username iPhone looking to speak with his hand?
That's the neighbor that lives right next door, I believe. You're up.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr.
Mr. Higgins, Patrick Higgins.
Yeah, yeah, one second. Cabeas, give him an ult.
Do you swear to the truth, Mr. Higgins? Mr. Higgins, hold on a second. Do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, my first, my first concern to the parking, the size of the building, I didn't see the storage units. I I saw the little entrance, the access to the roof deck, which is like the one behind me, again, on a ten thousand square foot lot. But I also, I thought I heard earlier in the meeting that Dimitri's not gonna be living there. He's gonna sell him his condos?
Yes.
See, now he told me he'd be living there with his two children. And uh, he said the only only way that would be feasible for him to live there was to have the second unit. That, you know, that made it more understanding, but to just, I mean, right now I'm sitting in my yard, it's half blocked out by sun. Here we are, six o'clock. And now my my peak is probably twenty five feet max, and that's gonna be forty one feet. I mean, I, those are my only concerns. I mean, there's the size of the building. Uh, him just doing it, he told me he'd be living there, so.
I don't know that. I I know the council is talking about condos.
Right, I I heard I heard him mention that maybe some of those condos, so. But uh the size of the building and the parking are my concerns.
All right.
Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
Hello?
Anyone, anyone else want to speak?
You have two hands right now. You might also have the owner, I believe, is uh unmuted as well.
Can you hear me?
John Rotafeld? Just speak up, guy. I think you're muted.
Your microphone might be muted.
Mr. Chairman, my my client's also here and uh he may want to to uh address Mr. Higgins' comments because I I I I didn't have an opportunity to discuss his uh intentions of living there, so maybe Dimitri can uh speak to that.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
John, are you up?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, just barely. Go ahead.
How about now? Is that better?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm outside. I'm sorry. Obviously, Zoom does not work good outside, so um. But basically, um, I was gonna say they give um Ed gets all the tough cases, you know, Rob gets the easier ones. I mean, this is a tough one. I mean, my question was, is this residential A or is this residential B?
Residential B.
Okay, so.
It's right next to an A because that big building down there, they made it, they made a block or two down there of Residence B.
Um, you know, it it it's a crazy thing. I mean, someone at the meeting again last night said, you know, would you want to live next to that? I mean, the problem is this, is that if there's a thirteen foot setback that's on the side, that's there because the houses cast a shadow. So if someone wants to go within, you know, wants to go less than thirteen feet, I can't see how they can also go higher than thirty five feet because their shadow is gonna cast, you know, this is just, you know, this is something that would belong in Quincy Center or something, but it, you know, I don't really see this. but it, you know, I don't really see this being like, you know, I'm not sure how you fix it. I don't think any two-family there really fits well. I mean, I'm sorry for the developer, and, you know, the name of the thing is Virtual Capital LLC, so, you know, they could be virtual landlords, too. So it's just, it's a tough one. I mean, I would, you know, I'm against it. It's just way too dense. I mean, if, let's just say, if you do allow this, we got to allow this everywhere. So you guys set the precedent, and thank you.
Thank you, John. The owner like to speak? Dimitri?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
For some reason, I was muted. Mr. Higgins, so my intention is, there's two Dimitris, so that might be confusing. My intention is to occupy one of the units with.
Are you, are you, are you a lawyer?
I am not, no.
No. Could you please swear him in?
Yes, Mr. Dimitri, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So just to address Mr. Higgins' concern, we did meet, there's two Dimitris, which may be confusing. I, my intention is to occupy one of the units as we, as we finish the project, if we're able to.
Where do you live now, then?
I'm in Needham right now. I'm renting.
All right. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Counselor McCarty, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the conversation, especially Mr. Himmel, Board Member Himmel, on the size, and the design's nice, and Counselor Fleming makes a great point that getting off of C Street, you know, is, is, there's not much room. And I went down and looked at that lot a few times, and they do have room in the back, but it needs to be smaller, so it doesn't engulf the neighbor next door. And, but the, the thought process in the front with the parking makes a lot of sense, as we all know C Street. So, you know, again, it's res B, and, you know, we're taking a hard look at this, I think harder than ever, and trying to stay with what's supposed to go in those, in those zoning, those zoning areas, and, you know, three stories is three stories. I think it does get a little bit, I won't say deceiving, but on that fourth floor, but all of a sudden, there's a few other locations, not in that area that I've seen, that I've looked at, and when they add a little bit more, it is a fourth floor, and it becomes, and I saw. Kilby Street, as Chairman Aiken said, is, you know, we put no parking signs on there recently, right on the other side of Mr. Higgins' home, because folks were parking off of C Street, trying to find a place to put their car, but if you put your cars over on Kilby, you take a whole lane, and you pretty much block the street. So anything around the corner is out. So I'd love to see something nice go in there, but something that conforms, works out for the neighbor, but it would be, it's a nice design, but maybe we can have them come back, and we can relook. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That's last call, and all in favor? I didn't even get to the other. All right. Hey, call up out of hearing, close. I got a letter here from the GPW. May 10, 2021, 651 C Street, case number ZBA 2115. We have reviewed submittally above reference project. Our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for paving area, all driveways, and entrances. Five, the existing lot posses should be consolidated into one lot parcel for the development. Where is it two lots? Consolidation plans shall be recorded in the registry of D's and F's County. On completion of the project as bill plan showing utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file, and elevation certificate should also be submitted. Property in the flood zone. Anything further, please advise. Call up out of hearing, close. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? No hands up? Third call? Close. Counselor, I just think it's too big for the lot myself. You're going like five, five-something on each side of this lot. You only got a 50-foot lot. I know it's gonna be tough to build a duplex in there, but really, you gotta shrink this thing down a little and bring it down a little bit, my liking, just. And I know you're trying to make a buck and get the thing built. I get it. It's cost the land, I get that. I get the development costs, believe me. Two by fours, eight bucks. I get it. Gone crazy. But people gotta live there the rest of their lives, too, so that's, that's my two cents. Any comments, Mr. Cavares?
Yeah, as I said before, Mr. Chairman, I really believe that this is four stories. This is, I think it has to be changed. And I am concerned now even more about the parking, because though that's designed, that front's designed for people to be able to turn around, I guess if people just park and cars there, too. So I think he has to come back with something else.
Mr. O'Brien?
Same, I agree with the board members. I think it needs a relook, a little bit different approach. Thank you.
I'm happy to review different plans from the applicant.
Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
Sure, I'd be happy to review different plans from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Himmel?
Agreed. I think I made my point earlier. It's just too much for a small lot.
Thank you. Counselor, I think they want, build smaller house if you could, and try to get rid of that top somehow. Try to give us a little more, maybe, I don't know. Did they say you had to put it that far up and leave the backyard, or you just left the backyard for that reason?
No, I think we wanted to, we wanted to create some green space in the back to have some amenity for the, for the residents of the building, and really get enough room in the front to park those vehicles. But let's, let me look at this with the applicant.
All right.
And his, and his team. And if we can continue the matter to the next available date, we'll, we'll come back with some revisions on the plans.
All right, we're gonna have them a week ahead of time?
Yes, absolutely.
You have June 22nd?
Or July 13th?
Counselor? June 22nd or July 13th?
Is Mr. Bailey here? I mean, he's obviously gonna have to do these revisions. I'm not sure if he's here to comment.
There he is. Mr. Bailey, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have something at the, whatever your next deadline is.
22nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
A week prior.
We're gonna have them a week prior, right? We'll have them uploaded?
Yeah, so, okay, so the next meeting is the 22nd, so you need them on the 15th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Grab a motion, Mr. Cavares.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, amendment 21-15, Virtual Capital Group LLC, for a special permit, flood plain variance, to remove the existing single-family house, and construct a new side-by-side duplex-style building on the premises number 651 C Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing until June 22nd.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Yes, Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Aiken?
Yes. John Himmel's out, and.
Thank you.
Mr. Frankel is in. Further under tonight, ZBA 2122, David Gilano, I apologize, Giuliano, for variance to construct an addition of a bathroom and a dining room on the first floor, premise 359 Belmont Street. Is the applicant or representative here?
Yes, the representative is present.
All right, you have the floor, sir. You a counselor?
I'm not.
All right, could you swear him in, please? Mr. Cavares?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So my name is David Giuliano. I'm representing the homeowners of, excuse me, 359 Belmont Street. They're proposing, or I've been working with them, on addition to their existing home, which, as you stated, will include an extension of their existing dining room, as well as a new bathroom, and also some covered exterior deck. The, you know, we are here before you seeking two variances, one from table, I should mention, it's, the house is located in the residential A district. It's currently, it's currently non-conforming on the front and side yard setback. So we are seeking relief from 3.4.5, which prohibits the extension of a, of a currently non-conforming structure, as well as 4.1.1, with relief to the rear yard setback. So the proposed addition is about, I can show you my screen, just the A B discussion.
John, can you let him use the screen here, John?
Great. So the proposed addition, if you can see this, it is approximately 140 square feet, and that includes the, the one-story bathroom, as well as the, as well as the extension of the dining room. There is currently an existing three-by-five covered entry, side entry to the existing residence, which the homeowners would, would like to expand to be a meaningful outdoor living space, which is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood.
You want to what? I didn't hear what you said that last thing. Want to what?
So they have an existing three-foot by five-foot entry, side entry to their kitchen, which is where we're calling it right now, the proposed deck. And so what's being proposed here is really an expansion of, of that three-foot by five-foot deck, so that they could accommodate really a, you know, a table and chairs, and be able to sit outside and just enjoy the covered deck.
How big is that? 10 by 10, you said?
Six by 12.
Six by 12?
Yes.
But what does that bring that side setback down? Two feet, 10 feet?
It brings it to 4.7, down from 7.7. So it's a, it's a, again, a further, a further encroachment on that space. The, you know, the rear yard would, you know, would, you know, we know it's currently conforming to the rear yard setback at 22.1 feet, and the addition would bring it down to 16 feet. We, you know, we had explored several options that would be allowed by rights, and it's, you know, it's worth noting, as the floor plan of the existing residence here, you know, the, the home doesn't currently have a first-floor bathroom. This is really the, you know, the genesis and the beginning of this conversation was, you know, how do we get a bathroom on the first floor? You know, the homeowners may have guests in the, in the future who have, you know, limited mobility, or even a future homeowner might be mobility restricted, and, you know, it's infeasible to use the second floor, or impractical.
Is it up for sale?
The, so the, is what up the stairs? I'm sorry?
It up for sale?
It's not up for sale, no. So, no, we're speaking primarily for the, for the use of the current homeowners, but also, you know, down, down the line, you know, another buyer looking at it someday.
The value of the house, of course, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
So, you know, we, we looked at locations on the first floor where, where we could possibly, you know, locate a bathroom within the existing footprint, and felt that any effort to do that was really chopping up the, you know, the floor plan in a way that was going to be detrimental. The home was built in 1900, so it is, it is older. As you can see, and I'm just gonna flip back to the survey very briefly, you know, they do have space in the side yard. We were being mindful also the fact that, given the, given the age of the structure and the orientation of the framing, you know, the two long walls, we know are load-bearing. And if there's an opportunity to, to do something that, you know, that would, you know, allow us to have an addition without opening up, you know, a 120-year-old existing bearing wall, we'd certainly prefer that. And secondly, this, although, you know, it is part of the property, it's private open space, it is visible from the street, and we feel that it does provide a benefit to the neighborhood by, by not adding on, you know, and, and previously undisturbed open space. I have a, you know, a small rendering here that just shows, you know, the nature of the side yard, seen from the sidewalk.
Yeah.
If the, you know, the addition that we're talking about would really be, you know, off of the back and help preserve the nature of the existing home.
Right, right.
I'm happy to take any, any questions, but.
Yeah. And I see, I see where you're going with that. I read, you know, what you're just stating in there about the walls and low-burned walls and all that. I get it. I get what you're doing there, and the deck, the deck, for me. I have no questions on what you're going on. Mr. Cavares?
I have no questions either at this time.
Mr. O'Brien?
I'm not at this time.
Mr. Chin?
No questions yet.
Mr. Ray Dell? I mean, Mr. Frankel?
No questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here like speaking in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call? John?
Not.
John Motafell? John's up. Don't want to push his thing, I think. John, you want, or out?
Thank you, that's it.
All right, thank you, John. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? And none? Third call? Call up out of hearing, close. I have a letter here dated May 11, 2021, 359 Belmont Street, case number ZBA 2122. We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Call up out of hearing, close. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavares?
I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise.
And Mr. Frankel?
I'm happy they're leaving the yard the way it is. I'm in favor.
Roll a motion, please.
Chairman, amendment 21-22, David Gilano, for variance to construct an addition of a bed, bathroom, sorry, bathroom and a dining room on the first floor of premises number 359 Belmont Street, make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
You can. Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Martin Aiken?
Yes. Further under tonight's agenda, you're all set. Thank you. ZBA case 2124, Wanley Kai, for finding to enclose the existing front porch, number 62 Edge Mayor. The applicant or representative here? 62 Edge Mayor, anybody? Anyone here, 62 Edge Mayor? People can't get in line? What do they think? 62 Edge Mayor, to call it last again, there's one more before him in this. Case number ZBA 2125, Daniel Tarabelli, for variance to construct a two-story addition on a deck on the premises number 140 Squanto Road, and Mr. Ray Dell is in, and Mr. Frankel is up. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Daniel Tarabelli, here.
You have the floor, Dan. Let me see. You need to be sworn in? Yes?
I am an attorney.
You're an attorney? You're all set. Go ahead.
Well, I, I would first like to thank the board for taking the time to consider our variance application and for having us here today. My wife and I are both lifelong Quincy residents, and our current property is our second house in the city, and this is a special house to us. I mean, not only do we get to live close to our family, we also, we actually.
All right, who's got the dog yelling? Please mute your, mute your thing. Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
That's fine. We actually get to live next to our family. Um, my sister is my neighbor, and she has young children that are my son's age, so i- it's a really nice scene. But as we explained in our application, it's somewhat problematic. We have an older home that doesn't really have the layout or the square footage for our growing family, or to entertain the amount of extended family that we regularly have over. I think the two-story addition that we've proposed both solves that issue and stays true to the character of the neighborhood. Based on what I've seen after living here for a little over year, I like to think that what we're doing is not really out of the ordinary in Marymount. Um, I'm gonna keep this brief because I think our written application covered all the salient points, and I don't wanna waste the board's time.
Now, just go, just go through what you wanna do with the, uh, with the building. You got a two-story addition, go ahead.
Two-story addition off the back of the house. It's going to be eighteen by twenty-three. The first floor is going to be a family room, uh, with a bathroom. It's gonna be connected to a finished basement by a spiral staircase. The second floor is gonna be a master bedroom with a bathroom and a walk-in closet.
All right, and someone told you you could use this plan and don't say twenty-three, it says twenty?
Yes, I, I spoke to Mr. Duff, and he said that instead of, uh, paying the money to go out and get another one, I could just add an addendum, which was very.
All right, we'll put three, put three feet over on that, guys. So it goes to the corner of the house. There you go. Okay, and that's it. I, I let, you know, it's.
Deck somewhere?
I think it's, uh, you got a deck going on the back too?
We do have a deck going on the back, yeah.
Yeah, all right. How big is the deck?
Deck, I believe, is eight by twenty-three.
Okay.
Halfway down, it cuts down, and it'll be about four feet.
Yeah, I like it. I looked at it, I goes, it's gonna have a beautiful house then when you're all done.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Uh, Mr. Caveas?
I have no questions either.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. O'Brien?
Um, no questions, just a comment. The, the renderings of this make it look like if it's awful big. I don't know if that's just the way it. Other than that, no comments or questions.
Okay. And, uh, that's it, okay. All right, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone?
Counselor McCarthy with this.
I know, I was just gonna call them after people speak, just so he knows. Uh, anyone else? Anyone else in favor? First call? Second call?
John Rotelfell.
John Rotelfell, go ahead.
Being quit tonight, I'm in favor, thank you.
Glad to hear it, Johnny, you baby. Counselor, go ahead. You're up, Dave.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I'm glad Rotoff's in favor. Um, no, it's great to have families in Marymount and in all Award One and in the city, I think in general over the past year or so, um, staying in Quincy, they know they got a good thing, and, uh, this is a nice addition for these folks to, um, grow their family and stay right in Marymount, which is a wonderful neighborhood, so, uh, they have my full support. It looks like a, uh, a nice, um, add-on with a, a big family room and, and a, a master bedroom, and, uh, it looks like it, uh, will work well, and I think they, uh, it is, um, deceiving sometimes in Marymount because the houses are pretty close, but I know they got the room in the back to, uh, to take care of this, so they got my support.
Thank you, Counselor. Last call? Call that power of hearing close. I got a letter here from the GPW.
Sorry, Mom. Mom, sorry, I see Louise Kelly with her hand up. She was just waving on.
Are you, are you in favor, Louise?
I, I'm not against it, I have questions.
Okay, then I'll call you in one minute. I'll call you one minute. Thank you. I have a letter here from, uh, May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, one forty Squanto Road, case number Z B eight twenty-one twenty-five, we reviewed above rest of this middle and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? Louise? Kelly?
I have, I have.
Caveas, your question first? Do you still tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths that help you God?
I certainly do.
Thank you very much.
That's why you're there, Mike. Thanks, buddy.
Um, my concerns are that the addition is going to go on quite a way back, and there's going to be very little land in back to absorb the rain drainage. Currently, it tilts towards my home, and I, where is the, all the water going to go? Over here. And there's, um, also the drain pipe on the house is pointed towards my home. I would like to ask that it, an elbow be put on it so it runs down there, the side of their house and not into my yard?
Okay.
Um, I think that's a reasonable request.
And, but there is fifty-one feet in the back, and he's going back to twenty-four feet, so he has twenty-five, almost twenty-five feet in the back. After it's built. But I will, we can put that, we can put that condition in that he, that he puts the elbow going on his own property.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Uh, the second issue is that, um, the driveway is very narrow. This, that this property was two independent distinct deeds, and I actually, fifty years ago, purchased that house as a young bride. And then, because my husband was sick, I had to, I either had to move out of there because he needed wheelchair, and we could not add onto the house, um, to accommodate it. So we built the house here. And, um, we loved living here. We brought our children.
Beautiful.
So we're concerned about the heavy equipment on the driveway, because there's, there's a bumped out window, and I don't know how they're going to get the equipment down, but I have a, a sprinkler system to hear, and I, I don't want them driving on my driveway. My lawn, I don't.
They have no right to drive on your driveway, right?
Okay, 'cause I, I let someone else do it. So I'm not putting heavy trucks on it. No, it was a different thing. We did. We concerned about the cement trucks, they're not.
Anything else?
I just said that. Oh, one other thing.
Okay.
Um, I don't know how to put this, but it's not in my nature to do it. I was concerned about the way the letter was written, the intention of having a lot of parties. It's clearly stated that that's what they intend to do, and I welcome that. However, I don't want it to go to four-thirty in the morning.
No, it shouldn't, no one should. We have, we have, we have a noise ordinance here too anyway, but I think I, I really took it as this family is so big now, with his sisters and everyone that, to fit everybody to have the extra room, that's what I took.
No, I, well, there were six in our family, and, uh, we, we did not go to that late in that.
Right, right. And no one should, you're right.
There's been a few, and I'm eighty. I live in Lake, and I don't have to worry about, and it wasn't that often, but I, I'm just bringing it up as a real concern.
Yeah, well, it's the Tarabelli, I encourage.
Sorry, Dan.
I don't know like it is.
I'll still bring your trash in for you.
And, and my sons still did, uh, we have to live as neighbors. The snowplow, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else?
I think that's all.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call? Call that power of hearing close. Uh, I think you got it, no going on here, driveway, big truck, so they're gonna have to work out, but you gotta work out your side. Put the drain going on your property, Dan. When it comes off, so it don't blow all over her yard, uh, and like you say, your neighbors and you get along, let's, everyone keep it that way. You got twenty-four feet in the back, I'll be voting in favor.
You're voting in favor too, Mr. Chairman?
Hey, it's okay. Mr. O'Brien? Mr. O'Brien? All right, you're here yet. Russell?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Let's go, Brian?
Yeah, okay.
All right. And, uh, where am I looking? I'm missing someone. Oh, Mr. Raydell, there he is.
I'm in favor.
I didn't know, is that dude like in the back with a hat and ball cap?
Hey, I'm on, I'm on dad duty right now.
Oh, where is he?
We gotta get out of these Zoom meetings and back in, back in front of you.
Exactly, I feel the same way. Good comments, Brian.
I don't know, I have no comments. I, I, I'm in favor, I think it's a nice project.
All right, could I have a motion, please?
Best Mr. Chairman, matter number twenty-one dash twenty-five, Daniel Tarabelli for a variance to construct a two-story addition in a deck on the premises number one forty Squanto Road, I make a motion to grant the variance.
I can add?
What are the conditions?
Second. Conditions, uh?
Drainpipe elbow.
Drainpipe, drain, drainpipe elbow, and do not use her driveway for big trucks or any truck to go in there unless she lives with him. Don't want the big trucks, construction trucks on the driveway because she has, uh, sprinklers underneath it, I guess.
Got it.
And, um, can I have a, a roll call vote, please?
Mike Caveas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yep.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Brian Redell?
Yes.
Martin Egan?
Yes. And, uh, Tarabelli, I think is, wants a squash on the four-thirty parties. All right? Keep it down a little, thanks, brother. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Further under tonight's business, CBA twenty-one twenty-six, Buck Chef for variance to add a deck on the front of the property, the premises number ninety, Nine Chick Street.
Should we do twenty-one twenty-four?
Edgemere, no. Because I'm so, it's people not showed up yet.
Yeah.
Uh, Nine Chick Street.
Yes, I'm representing.
You?
Yeah.
You, could you take an oath, please? Are you a lawyer?
No, I'm not a lawyer.
All right, could you, Mike?
Tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truths that help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So, um, we, uh, me and my husband and our two kids own Nine Chick Street, so we are the owners. Um, this is where we plan to have our family grow for the foreseeable future. We are just wanting to put a deck, um, a porch onto the front of the house. We have a view of the ocean, so we would just like to have somewhere to sit in the afternoon. Um, if I can share the screen, I can show you the plans.
Yep.
And, on the side text, one of their arms.
You can do that now.
Yeah, okay, so.
It is a crazy deck, isn't it?
It's nice, it's, um, it's just, it doesn't actually, so this is it, it doesn't extend past the stairs that already exist there. It doesn't extend past the houses either side of it, um, and they all have decks and things, so if you can see this part of the house, um, and I'll show you the.
So you're not tearing that out? You're gonna leave that in the middle?
Yes, that will stay the same, it'll just be to either side.
All right, either side, I, I didn't, I, I thought you would take that all out, make it one, one new piece, okay?
Yeah, and I'll show you just one other image, give me two seconds.
Yeah, I read it, but I didn't take it with faith. Oh, thank you.
Keeps on sharing the same page, hang on. We can't even see it.
Yeah, it didn't come up yet. You got it, Jess?
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up now, for some reason it won't share the one that I want it to share. Um, you know what? It's all on the application, let me just.
No, we have it here, all, all, but it'd be nice if someone in the app, someone in the audience get to see it, if you could.
Yeah, so this is the, um, plot plan, and just so you can see where the rest of it.
There's nothing coming up, Jess, we have nothing yet.
Oh, you can't see my screen at all?
I can't see nothing, no. Says, it says, says you, you, you started screen sharing, but we don't have no pictures.
Okay, uh, I don't know why it's not.
John, you wanna help us with that? Jonathan?
Uh, that looks like she's doing what she's supposed to, but for some reason it's not clicking unless, unless you, when the dialogue box, uh, opened up, did you click on the correct window to share?
Yeah, yeah, I did.
Try, let me, let me try stopping it and letting you come back in again.
Okay.
Uh, give it a shot again.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
So, Jay? Jay, you know your phone?
That's you?
Uh-uh. Locked off.
Oh, I don't know.
We got two hopes.
All right, can you see now?
Ah, much better.
Yeah!
Awesome, cool. Um, so yeah, so this is our house here, and obviously these are the other houses. It doesn't actually extend past their part, it doesn't extend the neighbor's house, and they all have decks with the same kind of stuff, so we just wanted to put two little things either side of the stairs. Uh, and then this is obviously the three version of what it looks like. It's kind of not a very nice presented house, but once we have the deck on, I think it's gonna look amazing.
But the deck now is really, it's, it's stopping before the end of each side of the house, you said, exactly at the end. It's just said before the end, correct?
It stops before the end of the step, so that pole, I'm crapping behind that last step.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone, is there anyone from the board that has any questions, Mr. Caveas?
I don't.
The Chin?
No questions yet.
Mr. O'Brien?
No.
And Mr. Frankel?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Uh, I have a, never mind. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call?
Not seeing any hands.
Second call? Third call?
No, no, don't, what are you doing with that sand, bud?
Call that.
No, we don't, we don't put that water.
Brian, you, can you mute? Thank you. I got a letter here from the DPW, May eleventh, twenty twenty-nine, Nine Chick Street, case number Z B eight twenty-one twenty-six, we reviewed above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call?
No hands.
First call closed. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Caveas?
Yes, I'll be voting in favor.
Comments? Mr. O'Brien?
Favor.
Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Frankel?
I am in favor.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote and a motion from Mr. Caveas?
Let me give you a motion first. Is matter number, which is Street, of twenty-one twenty, uh, twenty-one dash twenty-six, Buck Chef for a variance to add a deck onto the front property, front of the property on the premises number Nine Chick Street, I make a motion to grant, to okay the variance.
Second.
On the motion, Dana, can I have a roll call vote now? On the motion, Santa, can I have a roll call vote now?
Yes, Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Martin Egan?
Yes.
You're all set. Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, we have two calls, no calls. I wanna call backs if they're here. What's that?
Eleven Vertchild, you called. They weren't here yet.
We got eleven Vertchild and I have, uh, sixty-two Edgemere. Is either one of them here? Eleven Vertchild or sixty-two Edgemere Road? Either one? Either one?
You can go ahead and unmute yourself if you are here.
Anyone here for those projects? Uh, I don't know what you wanna do, guys. You wanna put them off in June?
Yeah, suppose we should.
The last meeting in June was, uh?
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second. Make motion for both of those, please, and then we'll give them a call and ask them what happened. Maybe they couldn't get on, I don't know. Maybe something happened. June twenty-second. Cavais?
Okay, this is, uh, Vertchild and Edgemere, right?
Yeah, both of them, one at a time.
All right, so, let's start with this. Matter number twenty-eighty-two, Robert Peddeman for a variance to remove the existing stationary stairs and replace with a new deck with stairs on the premises number seven eleven Vertchild Street. I make a motion to continue the hearing June twenty-second.
Second.
Yes.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Cavais?
And then in matter number twenty-one dash twenty-four, Wendy Kai for a fighting to enclose the existing front porch on the premises number sixty-two Edgemere Road. I make a motion to extend, to continue the hearing until June twenty-second.
Second.
On the motion, saying that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
The floats are in. John, the floats are in.